Would the regular meeting in Mishawaka County Council for October 8, 2018, please come to order. Please place electronic device and unmute. Remove your hats. Please stand at the flagpole.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And first, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Captain?
Here.
Mr. Tanner?
Here.
Mr. Deo?
Here.
Mr. Vaneke?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Mr. Canariki?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here. Approved the minutes of the regular meeting September 17, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, they'll stand approved. It's just due from the post office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and no more.
Yes, Mr. President. We have petition number 2018-24 to the Honorable Members of the County Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a petition to rezone from I-1 Heavy Industrial to R-1 Single Family, 2051 East of Los Alamos. This is for Heather Coleman. Petition number 2018-25 to the Honorable Members of the County Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. Petition to rezone from C-1 General Commercial to R-1 Single Family Residential, 401 East of Mishawaka Avenue. This is signed by Jack and Amanda Dorman. Petition number 2018-27 to the Honorable members of the County Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. Petition for vacation of public driveway. This is a vacation of public driveway for a portion of Madison and Time Streets for Center for Hospice and Allied Care. This is signed by the Foundation of the Foot Center of Hospice and Allied Care and Robert and Patricia Geller. Petition number 18-28 to the Honorable members of the County Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. We're doing petitions for rezone. This is to rezone 209 North Cedar and 602, 608, and 612 Madison Street from R-1 Single Family Residential to C-4 City Center Commercial. This is how signed by the Foundation for the Center for Hospice and Allied Care and the City of Mishawaka Development Department.
Thank you. Orders of special committees, saying none. Orders is on first reading. Also none. Resolutions? Saying none. Orders is on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2018-19 and ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, providing zoning classification therefore. This is to annex rear 181458 of 55946 Culver Road and rear 94758 of 1828 East McKinley Avenue. Rezone the rear of 55946 Culver Road and 1828 McKinley Avenue to I-1 Light Industrial. This is a public rezoning meeting with no vote.
Thank you very much. May I report, please?
You will have committee order.
This is second reading on proposed ordinance 2018-19. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ray Lang. Lang, being associated with our address is 715 South Michigan Street, South Bend. I represent the petition in this case. Propose assemblies has the property immediately to the east of this property is looking to expand. They purchased the adjacent properties, which is this petition here before you, and are looking to annex them to the city to allow them to put building on property that's being annexed in to allow them. They are currently leasing property in Edwardsburg and are looking to kind of keep it all in the City of Mishawaka and to make logistics a whole lot easier for that sort of petition before you as for that annexation and zoning to allow them to expand location where they're at.
Any questions, Mr. Volker? Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2018-19? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance 2018-19? Any council members wishing to speak? It's closed. Public hearing.
Proposed ordinance number 2018-20 and ordinance of the City of Mishawaka authorizing the issuance of waterworks, running bonds with the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the municipal waterworks of said city, providing for safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said bonds, other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds, and repealing ordinances inconsistent therewith.
Thank you. May I report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Your Committee on Budget and Finance to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2018-20, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion it should be adopted. This is signed by a majority of me, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
All those in favor of the committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, same sign. This is second reading on proposed ordinance 2018-20. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Dave Majewski, Manager of Mishawaka Utilities Water Vision, 10577 Apple Tree Lane, Seattle. This project is a win-win for the citizens of Mishawaka. Will not only give us redundancy on the south side of town, something we currently don't have in one single feed in the south side of town. The booster station as part of this project will give us an additional feed to the south side of town. The booster and new tank in conjunction with each other will give us two million gallons of additional storage. The new tank will allow us to take the three million gallon tank currently online, offline, to regal that tank, and then we'll have five million gallons of storage on Iron and Trail. So that'll give us greater redundancy now on the south side of the central crusher district and in back all of Mishawaka. So that's one way that is helping all citizens of Mishawaka. Also, as part of this project, there's a thousand-foot watering. We have to run water through that iron and trail, iron road back to the abducted tank up by Meyer Store, and that'll give us that second feed, give us that redundancy on the south side of town. Also included in this is the design for the new treatment plant and well field at Judy Creek, and it'll take us to the final design, to the point where we're ready to build the treatment plant up at Judy Creek. Any financial questions? I also have Alex Hill from Humble and Associates who could be, and they'll give any questions to me if you have any.
Any questions, Mr. President? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The water tank that's being proposed up on the hill, is that on property owned by the city?
Yes, it is. It is our property.
So there's no need to annex any property or displace anybody at this time?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, I might add too, this is, there's no unit rate increase as part of the south side.
Mr. Canariki?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the sake of clarity, can you remind us how old the current rate?
The current rate is nine, it's gonna have its ninety on birthday next year, so when that goes offline, it'll give us a chance to get inside and check the structure and the technology and the reason at that point, so it's ninety years old.
I think in the past, you've mentioned we've had opportunity to peek in there. Are there any concerns that we would end up encountering big capital expenses unless we really get a chance to look in there?
From what we've seen, no. We had some RV cameras in the tank, and it's hard to see because you stir things up and sometimes things get a little gory underwater with the sediment, but we have not seen anything that means there's serious structural damage.
Great, thank you. Mr. Volker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just how long do you expect the construction to take for the new tank?
Approximately one year hopefully if the weather and everything holds out well. We hope to close on the loan and start digging hopefully by the first of November, ten minute winter, we should be hopefully online by late next fall.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Canariki?
Mr. Majewski, you said that this brings you up to the point of the new water treatment facility at Judy Creek, but not inclusive of that facility?
No, not inclusive. That'll be a separate one.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President?
Taking off on Mrs. Volker's thing, you said one year to build a new one. What about rehabbing the old one?
That'll be as soon as that, as soon as that, the new tank is online and we're satisfied, everything's working properly, we'll drain the other tank, and then the engineers can get inside, take a look at it, see what exactly needs, so that'll be on fast track. Hopefully, we can have something within a few months, and by following spring, summer, and that tank will be in the rehab.
About a year.
Probably about, probably, I'd say, everything good, everything good happens, probably two million gallons.
Thank you.
Mr. Dave? Okay, Dave, just for clarification, this does include the Judy Creek project, but the rate structure that we looked at, projected out over five years or whatever it was, that does include the project?
That includes the Judy Creek project.
So that will not cause any additional rate increases outside of what we've already looked at?
No, no, that is correct. No, no further increases. Correct me if I'm wrong.
And just a quick question to kind of follow up Mr. Canariki's. Is there a possibility, even though maybe small, that once we get in there and examine that old tank, that it may have to be recommissioned?
I don't think so. I think we haven't seen any leaks or we haven't had any signs of that. The big part is just, our whole system is predicated off that three million gallon tank, and we just can't get in there. If we drain the tank, we really have no way of controlling our system, so this will be a good way, we'll be able to rotate the tanks and clean. So we haven't seen anything that'll point toward there being any serious structural deficiencies. I mean, all things being said, we hope that's the case when we drain and get inside.
So worst case scenario, if it does become decommissioned, do we just lose the redundancy, or?
We'd lose, we're missing a million gallons of storage, right? So we're a little bit smaller, so, but I have to feel pretty confident because with lines and things we can do with them, I expect we'll be in good shape.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Canariki?
Thanks again. Just a quick follow-up to that. With having two where we could, you know, kind of alternate doing maintenance, what's really the maintenance schedule on something like this? What should be instead of nine years?
Nine years, realistically, you're inspecting your tanks with an RV or some type of equipment every three years. Going inside the tank like an elevated tank, which is in ground but essentially elevated because it's located in the city, probably twenty years for that, but this will give us a chance. A sensor or something goes out or something we need to get access to, we can actually drain the tank and not have to worry, you know, what are we going to do? Because that's our only, all our pots are, all our dollars are in that one tank, and we'll have the ability to switch over to the alternate tank.
Great, thank you.
I'd just like to take this time publicly to thank Mr. Majewski. I was fortunate enough to be a chaperone on one of my daughter's, or my daughter's school field trip to your location, and he'd announced any job, getting the field trip, and currently was about thirty-five, fourth graders.
Thank you, and that was, I will say, one of the best, they had questions, they noticed the little problems we maybe, you know, don't want people to see, they're like, you know, why does this look like this, or why is it like that? They noticed a minute, some little engineers and some little lawyers and that. So, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Majewski?
All right, thank you very much.
For enter.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2018-20? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance 2018-20? Are there any council members wishing to speak? Call for the question.
Sure.
And a third, we put full panel.
Mr. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Captain?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Deo?
Yes.
Mr. Vaneke?
Yes.
Mr. Canariki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes eight to zero. Proposed ordinance number 2018-21. See two halfs because it's stuck to the back. Good thing it's a separate one. And ordinance fixing the salaries of certain elected officials of the City of Mishawaka for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019.
Thank you much. This is the second reading on proposed ordinance 2018-21. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. They would may appear to speak in support of proposed ordinance number 2018-21 and 2018-22. Essentially the same, we're asking for raises for all of our elected officials and for our public employees who are not collectively bargained for as part of collective bargaining agreement, nor does this include any part-time staff members. But what we're essentially asking for is a one and a half percent raise by percentage for our staff members, as well as a $500 cash amount that would be distributed across twenty-six paid periods. And then, one of the things that I really wanted to get accomplished with this particular year is to match, we want our staff members to be thinking not only about the here and the now and money in our pockets now, but to prepare them for eventually retirement and for their fiscal health long-term. And so, we're asking for a one percent match of our deferred compensation program, which is our deferred compensation. So if a staff member contributes one percent into that program, the city would then match that at one percent. So this is in addition, above and beyond the deferred contribution that we already worked well. So I think that's just a nice benefit for, you know, we tend to have public, our public servants tend to stay with us for a long time. We think that's in their overall best interests. Is this what we wish we could get as a raise? It's not. We wish we could do a little bit more, but this takes us to the edge of our comfort level as far as what we can get. As you know, we are in a very tight fiscal cliff environment, and we have that, and then we're also facing, you know, kind of stiff competition for labor out there. We are still fortunate to hire and to keep good employees in every department. We are not at a point now where we're seeing, you know, a mass access to something more, you know, better paid, maybe in the private sector. We're not seeing that. Occasionally, we will lose a staff member, but we're still able to hire, which is good. It says a lot. I know other municipal governments that are not able to say that now, so I think that says something good about the Mishawaka government. But we know that, you know, there's a lot more competition for good labor out there. So if this raise keeps us heading in the right direction, we continue to give raises each and every year, not many municipal governments, local level governments can say that as well. So, I don't think any questions you may have.
Any questions for the mayor? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. I thank you, Mayor. I just have a question about the one percent deferred comp. Is that in a separate account from per?
It would be accounted for separately, yes. So programs that we would make available, it's already available right now, so we're paying and taking advantage of the deferred compensation for, and most of our, several of our departments take very good advantage of this and some not so much. Public safety tends to take more advantage of it, which is a good thing, but, you know, overall, we continue to think that it's a, it's a good investment in our people.
Any other questions for the mayor? Mr. Canariki?
Just on that same topic, thank you, Mr. President, Mayor. Is there a, is there any match right now?
There is no match right now. This will be the first time we're offering a match on this.
On the four tenths of seven, specifically.
We continue to offer a three percent match on per most departments excluding police, which negotiated something different.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2018-21? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance 2018-21? Are there any council members wishing to speak? Call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, will you please pull the council?
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Captain?
Oh.
No, it's twenty-one.
Okay. No committee report?
It's up to you. I mean, I.
Might as well, we'll do the committee report.
Keep so, so I got one vote.
So, to the members of the City, County Council, City of Mishawaka, Committee on Budget and Finance, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2018-21, dash twenty-one, report that they have examined said matter, and that in their opinion it should be adopted, is assigned by the majority of the committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
All those in favor of the committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, same sign. Committee report passes. Go ahead, play again.
When he put his hand up, I thought he was starting to question the ordinance, because I got scared. Mr. Captain?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Deo?
Yes.
Mr. Vaneke?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Canariki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes eight to zero. Proposed ordinance number 2018-22, ordinance fixing the salaries of all employees at the City of Mishawaka, except Mishawaka Park Department, elected officials from the Mishawaka Utilities for the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, for the year beginning January 1st, 2019.
May I have the committee report, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
To the members of the County Council, City of Mishawaka, your Committee on Budget and Finance, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2018-22, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion it should be adopted, is assigned by a majority of the committee, and I move with acceptance.
Second. All those in favor of the committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, same sign. This is the second reading on proposed ordinance 2018-22. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. President, council members, a veto on this one.
Any additional questions for the mayor?
And this is all, I may have misspoken a little bit. This is with the exception of Park and also the salaries.
Not included. Entire, please turn around.
I bet if it's still not passed tonight, it'll have to be in the, just so they know.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2018-22? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance 2018-22? Any council members wishing to speak? Call for the question.
Next question.
Madam Clerk, will you please pull the council?
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Captain?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Deo?
Yes.
Mr. Vaneke?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Canariki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes eight to zero. Proposed ordinance number 2018-23, this is the city, civil city budget for 2019 and task levy.
This does not have a committee report?
No, does not, because this is a pre-adoption hearing with no vote, but it does need to be amended.
Anyone? Yes, Mr. Captain?
Chairman, I move that we make the, we make the necessary amendments to 2018-23.
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, same sign. Has been amended. Bless you. So this is the second reading on proposed ordinance 2018-23. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. President, council members, state where the mayor would speak in support of the civil city budget 2019. As you may recall, that was fiscal cliff year, and so we talked a little bit about that. But the bulk of this budget, I'll go over some changes that, you know, take effect this year, distinguish it from last year. Not a lot has changed. Part of our process for trying to meet our fiscal cliff challenges is that we've really tried to budget conservative, and we've really tried to set ourselves out on a plan and stick to the plan. So this is part of the multi-year plan, we think that, you know, we're making good progress, but there are some challenges ahead still. So the biggest part of this budget really is the raises, which were just approved. So you know what those are? Those cover every employee or could cover every employee. The only exception, the only variant from that will be that we have an IT system for position that we have, that we have changed. There's a little bit of a discrepancy there, and so we're moving that salary up over the next two years. One encouraging thing is that our insurance costs are stable right now. That's not been the case in the, in the past, so that's, that's an encouraging part of our budget. This year, we will see some pretty significant public, public safety capital asset purchases. We're, we've already went out to, or with a new ladder truck, which will replace Quint Three, which went down last year, did not be repaired, could not be resurfaced by. So we have repaired one of our Quints, we still have two in, although we have a ladder truck in Quint service, but we will be purchasing a brand-new one, and that is a $957,000 expense. And that was, we had in the capital plan to buy that, but, you know, that's a, that's a big expense. So we're going to, we have to pay that after it's built, which will be nineteen, and then we'll be paying for that through our loan, our bond bank, I should say. And then we will pay the payments on that through our accrued cap improvement fund, which we usually try to keep as our, as our safety net, so we're going to dip into that a little bit. We're also at the fire department, we are going to be purchasing mandatory turnout for this coming year. Over on the police side, we have some pretty major investments to make as well. We will be buying thirteen new police cars. That's a pretty big jump over this last year, and, you know, we just had one go out of service a couple weeks ago in an accident, and so we're right now, our police cars are up and running. Right now, we're buying them, we're getting the SUVs at the same price as the set of hands, essentially, and then we're buying them with quality gear, already assembled, so when they come to us, they're kind of like, you know, all of the things that we ordinarily have to install ourselves. We're also replacing pagers starting this year. We're doing that through a kind of a maintenance agreement that we're going to do. Records management system, we're already about 1.1 million into that. We borrowed that from our bond bank, we're paying that back through our public safety lit fund at about 110,000 per year. So we're, we're buying a lot in public safety based on the needs that we have as a community, and it's really stressing out our public safety. We're getting to a point where that's really starting to impact our ability to make decisions. And then add to that, PSAP. PSAP continues to increase. We continue to be very vigilant in Mishawaka in advising them. Some of our advice gets taken and some of it doesn't. We think that we offer outstanding advice, and there have been many cases where if the PSAP had followed PSAP had followed our advice all along, they'd be in a better position now. But anyway, that overall bill continues to increase the city next year at $270,000. And that too is paid out of our, the taxes to public safety, as well as conceded. One encouraging thing in our budget is that, and part of our increase in our budget is that we're getting more money from the state, which is good because we're putting that to good use. Where we're seeing increased money, funding from the state is in particular our motor vehicle highway funds and especially in community crossings. And so that's having a direct impact on a quality of our roads. We're able to, as you see, out there in the community, take it anywhere from here. A lot of that is, is community crossings, paving work that we're able to do, as well as some other work that we have going on. But we have a million dollars budgeted for community crossings. If we're successful in receiving that grant for next year, that will double to $2 million in our roads. We're essentially doubling what we used to do in the past. So 700,000 of that comes from our local road and streets, and 300,000 of that adds comes from our motor vehicle highway. So that's causing us to be more deliberate in how we spend our road paving funds, but it also kind of restricts what we do because we apply for these funds, and if we get them, that's the projects we work on. And we do that a year in advance. So if a road deteriorates suddenly over the winter, you know, we have to find a way to pave that because we can't tap into those community crossing funds to do that. So we're striving, we're really trying to make sure that we're vigilant on our asset management plans for, for our roads. Over on the park side, we continue to invest about $150,000 into a featured park. Last year, we were able to complete Twin Branch Phase Two. Right now, we have budgeted to start Twin Branch Phase Three. Next year, we will be able to work on another park. Typically, with these funds, we hit the parks that don't have another funding source. And so we will determine, you know, based on the most need, we'll move and tackle another park next year. We are also budgeting for $130,000 for a pool liner. Pool liner is, that's probably past, way past, under life. We've patched it many, many times. We're at a point now where the pool is deteriorating to the point where, you know, we really are trying to evaluate how long that's, you know, going to be in existence. But with our current financial condition, it's going to be several years before we can probably get to that project. So we think that the investment in a liner now will add years to the service life of our pool before we decide to do something different with the pool and make it a much better amenity for our public. Over on the security side, we're spending a lot for our IT, our core equipment there and replacement. We're particularly concerned with cybersecurity needs, and so we're really focused from that department on, on security. We have plans in that regard. As far as our circuit breaker, it's estimated to increase to $7 million in a loss of, that's in losses from an estimated 5.4 million just a year ago, early this year. The latest projection, the projection is that in 2020, we'll be at about $10.1 million in circuit breaker loss. So that's how this circuit breaker is impacting us. We continue to budget conservatively. We're in a strategy now where we're trying to increase our cash balances as much as we possibly can, and we are increasing them slightly every year. Our overall budget's $55,749,918. That's a 5.49% over this current year. Again, most of that is due to the state, you know, increases in funding that we're seeing, as well as the raises that are going to impact that as well. So the good news, through all of our planning, through all of our multiple years of budget towards one goal, is that the fiscal cliff has been pushed back to 2022. So the bad news is that it is still there, and so we continue to prolong the ultimate, you know, the ultimate impact of that, but we're making good progress originally. At some point, we're going to probably have to look at new revenue or massive cuts. It's just, we're getting, you know, we're able to keep pushing that off, but that's what is ultimately going to get us through that unless we have, you know, growth continues to help us, which growth is helping us, but not near to the extent that we might see. And so with that, budget 2019, any questions?
Mr. Mayor? Any questions? Just a quick one regarding the insurance comment that you've made that it's maintained. Is that just for 2019? Or did we lock in rates past that?
So we're in for 2019. You know, we're kind of self-insured, so we have to assess every year. We made some pretty significant changes last year, which puts us in a much better condition this year. And so I think we're seeing less, aren't we, as far as?
Our claims?
Claims are down.
Our claims are down from last year. Last year, we were bad claims.
But our bad months are just getting ready to start when people decide, yeah, better get that procedure, that, you know, issue taken care of before the end of the year when the schedules run out, stuff controls.
It'd be great to learn that there is a direct correlation between free clinic versus the amount of claims going down.
We're seeing, we're seeing great utilization of our clinic. There are very comments about it, and we know, it's a hard thing to measure, but we know that it is pending dividends, and we've seen some very good catches of our money that might otherwise functionally itself within allowance. But it's just tough to measure those. It's good to know.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the mayor? Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2018-23? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance 2018-23? Any council members wishing to speak? Mr. Kanericki?
Mr. President, I just want to thank the one who really puts a lot of effort into this, Becky. Thank you so much for the preparation on this, as well as all the department heads who I know have put a lot of effort into finding ways to be creative with the funds that they do have. Also recognizing that as we grow, it puts an extended strain on our public safety services. And at some point in time, whether there's a fiscal cliff or there's a public safety cliff, if you will, one of those things is going to have to bend a little bit to make sure that the City of Mishawaka is safe and secure too. So I appreciate the work that you've done, the department heads and superintendents as well.
Mr. Kanericki? I too would like to just echo Mr. Kanericki's comments and also thank everybody in advance. And next week, we're starting, or this week actually, we're starting the budget hearings for the department. As I know, a lot of work has, has taken place in setting that up, and I just wanted to thank our team, for those that will attend each night, put in their time and effort. So thanks to all. I'll call for a question.
Question.
Can we just close in then? Oh, that's right. So we'll move on to the privilege of the floor. This is the portion of the meeting that members of the public are invited to come forward to speak on non-agenda items. Any participants? Unfinished business? Say none? New business? Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder, the First District Neighborhood Meeting, we held on the 18th, Thursday, and we'll be having so-called deal trip to the 9/11 call center. We'll meet at St. Bezos, and then we'll be transferred over to the 9/11 call center. So everybody is invited and, and it should be a very interesting trip and very informative. So if you're invited, would like to come, please come to St. Bezos Church, and we'll leave from there at around seven o'clock, and over to the 9/11 call center, and we'll have refreshments served at the 9/11 call center. Before you see, all there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Deo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Reminder that our meeting in the Third District will be on Wednesday, the 17th, and our guest this month will be Lieutenant Beckham from the Police Department, and he will be giving us a, our hot extraytation, which should be interesting in light of some of the things that we're seeing here in, occurring on the street. That'll be at 7:00 PM at Twin Branch School, and refreshments will be served, everyone as well.
Thank you, Mr. Deo. Any other new business? There's no further business to come for the council than a motion to adjourn as north?
So moved.